Well, that's it. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 19th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. And as we tabulate the speakers. Okay. Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
As you all know, or should know, most of you, we lost a very valued employee of our town after 40 years. And I would ask you that we could just have a moment of silence for Suzanne Lashaw. Thank you so much. I have a proclamation I'd like to read at this time. It's a resolution, Resolution Number 12, Series 2024. It's a resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado commemorating the life of Library Director Suzanne Lashaw. Whereas Suzanne Lynette DeAngelo Lashaw was born January 3rd, 1960, and whereas Suzanne grew up in Florence, Colorado, graduating from Florence High School in 1978, whereas Suzanne had a great love for and was a wonderful mom for three sons and her cats, English Springer Spaniels. And whereas Suzanne was a pillar of knowledge and wisdom for countless family and friends, as well as a paragon of strength and stability. Whereas Suzanne spent over 40 years as a devoted and hardworking public servant to the city of Canyon City, working her way from bookshelver to library director. Now therefore, it is resolved that the City Council of the City of Canyon City does hereby commemorate the life of Suzanne Lashaw and honor her for her dedication to her family and community and the city of Canyon City. Dated today, my signature. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, because it is a resolution, we do need a motion and a second.
We do need one.
Mayor Troutman, it would be my distinguished honor to move that we approve Resolution Number 12, Series of 2024, commemorating the life of Library Director Suzanne Lashaw. Second.
Second. But motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I would like to say one thing. I did attend the celebration of life, and one of the thoughts expressed during that, I thought, was rather profound. And the individual was talking about taking care of Suzanne's pets when she was unable to. And what they said is that when you're serving someone, there is no action that's trivial. And I thought that was really great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion on the motion? If none? Yes, Amy, go right ahead.
Thank you. I also just want to comment, as somebody who would go into the library pretty much every week, she really fostered a culture of caring and understanding and welcoming. And regardless of who you were in our community, there was a place for you there. And you were met with acceptance and kindness and a love of knowledge. And as John said, she was willing to do anything and everything in that library to make it, you know, truly a place that I think was wonderful for her employees to work in and also for our community to appreciate and love, kind of fostering the love of reading through so many programs for children and adults. And I just really appreciated everything that she gave to our city and to our community.
Thank you, Amy. Any more comments, Council? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Is Bert Corley here? Bert, would you come forward? Let's all rise for the convocation.
Invocation. Let's pray. Gracious Father, we come to you tonight just asking your blessing on these proceedings, Father, acknowledging that there is no government except the government that is established by you. And so, Father, we ask your blessing on our civil servants. Father, give them wisdom and discernment as they go about the business of governing Canyon City, Lord. We come to you tonight, our hearts are heavy for Ms. Lashaw's family, Father, and her family and her friends. We ask that you would be with them in their time of grief and loss and that you would bestow a special blessing upon them. We thank you that our city and our county benefited from her service for so many years. Father, we ask a blessing on our public safety officials, Father, and all of our public servants who serve us and make life a little more bearable for us day in and day out. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Plaids of allegiance, please. Plaids of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have at this time citizens' requests to speak. I have several people who have written asking to speak. We do have a timer, that is three minutes. And when there'll be lights on the dais, that'll show you yellow and then red, that means you should be ending. So the first one I have here is Rick Richloff. Is Rick here? Would you come forward, Rick, and address what's on your mind?
Well, one thing I was going to address is actually on here tonight, and I'm surprised to see it, but it was about having Larry Allen as a magistrate for the city. And I feel he's been a conflict of interest for a long time because you cannot file a complaint on him or anything. He only works for the city, he only answers to the city. And I pulled up over 40 cases, and he's ruled on everything for the city. So the city's making a lot of money off of Larry Allen, and that was one of my issues, that we actually need a judge here because we haven't had one for years. He's been a magistrate here for a long time, which is unheard of in a city. And we also need a DA here. We have a DA that drives from Denver that I feel isn't qualified. She's actually an attorney acting as a DA for the city. And I think it's a big conflict of interest that we, you know, have had Larry Allen here for years, and we don't have a DA. The last judge we had was Marshall, and he's been in there the whole time. And like I said, you're his boss, and he answers to you. The other problem is, I've talked to the mayor and called you several times with some problems I'm having, and you were supposed to get ahold of. Ryan set up a meeting, and every time, you failed to call me back. And you said, "Oh, I'll get ahold of you, we'll get this resolved." I have issues, and I need to get them resolved. I think you're failing big time as a mayor. I know, Ryan, you're failing as your job. You know, we, the people, have problems, and we're supposed to be able to come to you, and you're supposed to help us, and you don't do a dang thing. And I'm really disappointed. You need to step it up. And when you tell people you're going to call them back, you need to call them back. When you say you're going to have a meeting, you need to have a meeting. I don't know what's so hard about it. You're really letting us down. And not only me, there's a lot of people out there. I'm speaking for other people, too. So what are you going to do about it? You gonna start doing your job, or what? Because I'm really disappointed.
I think I did try calling you back, and you didn't answer.
No, I've called you four times. I had to call you every time.
And I think I tried to call you back as well.
Every time, four times.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Over four weeks.
Thank you.
No, it ain't "thank you." Do your job. Get ahold of me. Have your meeting. Do what you're supposed to do. You know? Or you won't be in here. You know? You're letting everybody down.
Well, I doubt that.
Do your job.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.
I'm done, well, I'm done.
Let's have John Zimmerman.
It's nice to see you all. This won't be as bad as the last one. This is about the CDOT project, Eight Mile Safety Hill project on Eight Mile. We came and addressed you a couple of months ago about the progress on that. And we went down to Pathfinder Park, Leann and I did, last Tuesday, I believe. There she is. And we had 15 residents there out of 40 that we had invited to go and express our disapproval for that project. But CDOT apparently doesn't want to listen to us, so we're going to have to do something a little bit differently. That's about all I had to say. I just wanted to make you aware of what's still going on. We're still fighting it. We're all for a safety project, but the way this is engineered is really not good. They want to put a U-turn at mile markers 272. And anybody that's familiar with that, that's about to the top eight-mile hill on the worst blind corner at a 5% grade. And that's where they want to make an engineered U-turn, put a hardened barrier from there one and a half miles down to the east where there's no cut-throughs. And we explained to CDOT, I have their data with all their safety data, we've had zero fatalities in the last five years in that area. Okay? They go back 10 years, and there was eight, which is still too many. We don't want any fatalities. But to have zero in five years, I argued that it must be getting safer, not worse. Let's just lower the speed limit. And the lead engineer told me, "Speed limits don't work." Well, that's surprising. I followed them to get here. But in the project, I see now, it's a 300-page project, I see that that is part of the plan, to reduce the speed limit after they put the hardened barrier in. So, you know, I might just, I have the plan if you'd like to see it. It's a lot of gobbledygook, a lot of reading to do, but it's just not very safe there. Out of the 97 accidents that have happened in 10 years up there, more than half of them were within half a mile of mile marker 272, where they're putting the U-turn. It just makes no sense to me. But anyway, I'll let Leann take over. I think she has more to say.
Okay, so this is your portion, then, because you wrote that you want to talk. So go ahead.
Thank you, Council. My name is Buffy McFadden, and John Zimmerman did bring up quite a few good points. I do want to thank Councilwoman Emily Tracy and Mayor Preston Troutman for attending the two-hour CDOT meeting last week along with Leo Evans. I would believe the mayor would concur that those opposing this project outnumbered the number of CDOT staff that were in attendance, and there were quite a few CDOT staff. I think we had almost 12 to 15 people who sat through a two-hour meeting to express their concerns, as CDOT had directed us to, to go to meetings to express our concerns. Last count, I believe this project was at about $55 million. We thought it was descending the list because they didn't get the last federal raise grant, but I understand they're applying for another grant. When we approached some of the members at CDOT, I think one of the biggest parts of the angst is the people living in the area and the businesses in and around the area don't feel like they had a say in the process. We were told those meetings took place 10 years ago. Well, that was a while ago. We can think of all what we were doing back in 2014. We probably weren't all at a CDOT meeting. Mr. Mayor, you all at Council are probably wondering why we keep coming back from the Eight Mile community, which is in the county, to express our concerns, because we're looking for leadership. We are at a conflict with the county commissioner, who is indeed pushing this project, who was at the meeting, heard all of the complaints. So that's why we're back here at Council, because I feel, and I feel the people at the meeting were aware that you were listening, Emily Tracy and Mayor Preston Troutman. So we're back. I will close with, in case you hadn't heard, I am running for county commissioner. This is one of the reasons I'm running. And I do believe we need more cooperation between our governments. I do believe the city of Canyon City actually is indeed in Fremont County. And together, we could do more, especially pulling down federal grants and state grants. So I will close with that.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from... Nope?
I have my hand up, Mayor, if I may.
Oh, yes, go right ahead, Emily. I didn't see your yellow hand there. Go right ahead.
I know. It's hard to see that online, I understand. I just want to thank both Leann and John overcoming and bringing us up to date in regard to the Eight Mile proposal. I guess I'm not 100% clear, is CDOT just not offering any additional meetings with the Eight Mile folks? Are they saying the plan is done and there's no further public input? I'm just not 100% clear where that stands.
Yes, Buffy, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tracy, and I'll be brief. We have asked for more meetings. There's an indication there could be more meetings, while at the same time saying that basically the project is set. I'm working on getting a meeting. I have a meeting set with our Transportation Commissioner Hannah Parsons in Colorado Springs. I have to change the date on that. I have a conflict on the date. But I'm not clear on that either. So your inquiry with your capacity as a City Council member may get further than I do.
Yeah. To me, so far, it's confusing, because I know, I can't remember what month it was, but it was some number of months ago that folks on the Eight Mile Hill met with some folks from CDOT. And there was a good discussion there, a good consensus about trying just the lower speed limit first before doing anything more in the way of barriers. And then I'm not aware that there was anything further communicated after that until what we heard at that CDOT meeting recently. So it's concerning to me. I don't know what the answer is, and if anyone else on Council, or Mayor, or our staff can address this, that would be great.
I do remember, Emily, I don't know if you were there, but Buffy, we had a dinner together with CDOT, and I almost felt from that that it probably was either not going to go or was going to be rearranged and changed. And then the next time, of course, we met was when we met CDOT last Monday. And then you all sat and talked with them. Is there, have you talked to the local person that does, I think it's Mr. Nelson, or your state representative for this area?
Mr. Mayor, I have not reached out to our state representative yet. She is aware of this project because we've brought it to her attention, along with, I believe, lithium-ion batteries. We could also, I'm sure, reach out to the state senator. But I do know, CDOT does respond when I use the title of former chairman of transportation and energy. That does seem to help. But we need a public meeting, and it wouldn't hurt if the mayor of Canyon City, as well as Councilwoman Tracy, or the council as a whole, request a public meeting back on this project. We need you. Eight Mile needs you. And you do have assets up off of Eight Mile on Road 3A.
Okay. So that's in the county, of course, you know that.
I do, but I understand the citizens of Canyon City do own it. I'm talking about the Royal Gorge.
Of the Royal Gorge? Yes. Yes, we do. Okay.
I'm bringing it home for you, Mayor. We all need to be working together, and I guess that's my point, is that the state's not an island, the city's not an island, and the county's not an island. And when 15 people sit through a two-hour meeting to tell you, "We think that makes it less safe," somebody should listen.
Sure. We can possibly talk with them.
We can see what we can do, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and give that a try. We've had an interesting relationship with CDOT over the years, and I'll leave it at that. So, okay, Melody Clemmons.
Hello. My name is Melody Clemmons. Six months ago, a group of us that live on Tunnel Drive addressed this council on several issues. Number one, the noise. Number two, the tearing up of the streets. The number of trucks has increased coming and going because of, now it's owned by Wholesome. They back up on 50 on both sides, they stop and talk to each other, or help each other, or whatever on both sides. You can't get through, and they back up. Our road is a disaster because of the trucks. Now, we talked about noise ordinances, and I don't remember what else. But here's the thing that's really concerning. Weeks ago, I was leaving, going to Highway 50, and one of these trucks, and it's happened to other people, just glanced in my direction, saw that he could make it, and blew right past that stop sign. There's a crosswalk there for the residents, for the Riverwalk. Somebody is going to get hurt. It was suggested that Wholesome take that back road, which goes behind the college, widen that road. You can see where Tunnel, excuse me, you can see where Tunnel Drive is too narrow for these industrial trucks. It's a residential street, and the guardrails are all smashed in because they can't make it. And the road, we have an everlasting pothole at the end of the road, no matter what they do. So my question to you is, I did talk to Duane McFall today, and now I understand that the Planning and Zoning Committee does issue the permits, and they are not supposed to be operational until 7:00 in the morning. However, we hear them at 4:30 at 5:00 in the morning banging up the road or banging down the road. And so I would like to know, what so far, what are the steps that the City Council has taken to help us?
We have a noise ordinance for second reading, I believe it is, tonight.
First reading tonight.
First reading tonight on a noise ordinance, and that's for the use of the compression brakes.
Well, what about, who is going to enforce the laws where they just blow through a stop sign and hurt someone? There was talk about, the young man from the Police Officers Unit there last month, or six months ago, talked about putting up cameras or having somebody film things. It's not really feasible for the residents to do that, because most, we live below the hydraulic ditch on Tunnel Drive. So, but we see them, and now they're traveling on Tunnel Drive itself, not just the mountain. They go, doggone it, sorry, I'm really sorry, going down Tunnel Drive, and then they'll go up the back way to the quarry. So we need a stoplight or a camera. Someone is going to get hurt, and it's going to be a tragedy, and I'm going to be very upset, because I don't like accidents, and they're avoidable. Maybe somebody should get together with Wholesome and discuss the issue of them taking their operation down another road, down that path to college, make it wider, make it more entering and exiting safe for everyone.
Okay. Amy?
Thank you. I believe that the city is currently working on the wholesome crossing agreement, and I know that that's in the city administrator report, but given Ms. Clemmons's comments, I think it would be really helpful to get an update on what that includes, if it includes use of jake brakes, if it includes hours that they're allowed to cross the street, if it includes maintenance to cover that damage that they're doing to the street. So if we could get an update on kind of how those negotiations are going and what the timeline on that is, that would be really helpful.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you looking for an update right now?
Yes, please.
I know Leo Evans, our Public Works Director, has been in touch with them. Last discussion was about including different parameters from the county's permit into the crossing agreement, so that, Wholesome has agreed to that. I think, you know, based on Ms. Clemmons's comments, when I reach out to CDOT for the Eight Mile Hill safety question, I'm going to bring up some of these other issues, because that is CDOT's, you know, that is their control, they have control over that particular entrance into the highway. So, you know, if there are opportunities for lights, a light there or something along those lines, that would be the appropriate agency for that. So I think Leo and I could probably work on that.
Thank you. And with regard to having CCPD perhaps do patrols through there, I know that that was part of the conversation during the first time that the residents came. Is that something that CCPD has been able to kind of add to the list?
It's on a rotation, absolutely, but unfortunately, due to staffing levels, we've got other priority calls.
Thanks. And I don't know if Melody is still there or not, but I was curious as to if she had any successful outcome from her conversation with the county commissioner. But then I just wanted to add a general comment, that these issues were first raised with me when I was first elected to council, which has been some time ago now. And it is more than just the annoyance of the noise, the dust. It is a safety issue in the way, it sounds like, what people are witnessing, these trucks do, running stop signs, going right over a walkway, a pedestrian crossing, that I just can't imagine trying to cross and not knowing whether you're going to make it past a truck that's barreling at you. So I would like us to just be sure that as a city, we're looking at the city pieces of this from a safety perspective, in addition to how this has really negatively impacted those residents through the noise and other things going on on that street that is not designed for large industrial trucks to run on.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to let you know that I also sit on the County Planning Commission. They have the Planning and Zoning Department. Dan Victoria is the head of that department, and I have raised this concern with him about enforcing the permit.
Thank you. Amy?
I did have one other question. Who should residents of Tunnel Drive address their, like, as trucks go through the stop sign and cause these public safety concerns, or as they are incredibly noisy outside of normal hours, who should residents address those concerns to? Is that a See Click Fix? Is that a...
I think if it's a safety issue, if it's related to running stop signs, that should be a call to the, probably dispatch or the non-emergency line. If there's information about the truck, that would be helpful. If it's regarding noise complaints, it's probably a See Click Fix type of complaint.
So See Click Fix is an online portal that you can submit information through. I would suggest coming up to the mic so that folks online can hear you as well.
You know, like I said, a few weeks ago, this truck just came right in front of me. It was a big orange or yellow belly dump. Tried to get the, well, I did get the license plate. I don't know what good that's going to do, but I did call dispatch and ask them. They said they can't give out any information. And all those trucks, you know, it's not the truck drivers, they're just doing their job and making a living. I get that. But somebody should be accountable for that. I did call the dispatch and ask them about it, and they said they can't give out any information from a license plate. So I like your question. Who do we talk to? Because it is a safety issue.
You can talk to us.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody in similar circumstances to call that dispatch number and ask to speak to an officer. Don't ask for discourse or disclose any information, you know, that they glean from NCIC or CCIC, because they obviously can't do that. But I would like for an officer to respond and talk to you. And if we have a complaining witness, we can pursue that. We can, at the very least, contact that driver and that truck and let them know that, you know, they've offended somebody, they almost caused an accident. Once folks know that we're starting to pay attention to those types of things, that can have a deterrent effect. And if the educational side doesn't work, then we can secure a summons and bring them to court and let them explain that. We just have to have a good witness.
Thank you so much, Chief Schick.
Tim?
Chief, real quick, while you're...
Chief, real quick, while you're there, if this seems to be like an ongoing complaint, is maybe somebody from your department contact somebody over at wholesome and say, hey, you know, we're getting a lot of complaints about your trucks, and can you, you know, talk to your drivers? Just something simple like that.
Well, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I know Mr. Stevens has been pursuing that with Mr. Evans. I would like to go back and pull some data, and make certain that we have those calls. I don't wanna write a bogus check, but, so to speak.
No, I understand that.
But I would encourage anybody who experiences what Melinda experienced to call us. That data goes into our database, and then we're able to pull it out, and we can have an intelligent conversation about this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next up, Cindy Dykstra.
Good evening, Cindy Dykstra. I also am on Tunnel Drive, and here to reiterate all of the complaints, and add a couple today. So, we talked back in March, I believe, that there are more vehicles now turning off the highway onto Tunnel Drive to go to the quarry, and coming back and down, than there ever used to be. So, I think that needs to be looked in as well, because the volume of traffic alone, I think contributes to some of these other problems, right? So, I took some images the other day, I took two batches, sorry. I was going west on Tunnel Drive in a bright teal pickup with a bright yellow kayak in the back. You can't tell me the semi-driver didn't see me. He pulled right out in front of me. He's in a hurry, because there's trucks backed up, there's trucks backed up. I have another set of images I took, trying to turn from the highway to Tunnel Drive. There were two long trucks getting ready to turn out of Tunnel Drive. There were three short bed trucks backed up, two of them, probably one and a half, sitting on the bridge at the same time the big truck is. I had nowhere to go, nowhere to go. They were completely blocking the entrance and exit to a federal highway. My other problem with what the police officer recommended, said, I don't feel like we should be the police. Okay? We've brought our concerns to you, we've brought our concerns to the police department. You know, do we need to sit down there and run a tape of the decibels on a daily basis for a week? Do we need to sit down there and take pictures of every truck running a stop sign? And even if I do, I got the guy's license plate that ran the stop sign? What am I gonna do? I'm gonna take time out of my life to go be a witness in court, and he's gonna say, no, it wasn't me, I'll say, yes, it was? Boom. What a waste of a life, waste of time. So, you know, these trucks, some of them make a sound coming down that hill, quite loud. I have also been out in the front yard just two weeks ago, and saw one come down, not creeping down the hill, but coming down, he didn't make one sound. I don't know how it was possible, but it is possible, and we all know it now. So, there's no really, no excuse for all that noise and silliness that's going on. As I had said before in March, I have clocked 91 decibels standing outside my front door when a truck's going down the hill. It's like someone screaming in your face eight, 10 hours a day. Yeah, the destruction of the highway, first of all, should be a huge concern, I would think. There is, and as Mel said, an enormous pothole that is part of the highway, and they're tearing that up, and yeah, they come along and they patch it, and it lasts about three hours, and it's back. Which is not only a roads issue, but a safety issue as well. Somebody's gonna break an axle in that hole one of these days. As far as the stop sign running, I did wanna add, before I sit down, that, let's see, my mail carrier has complained to wholesome about trucks running the stop sign. I had a gentleman come out from Pueblo to do some measuring for some renovations inside. He was shaking when he got to my house, because the same thing happened to him. So, I say we get on this, it's a safety issue. I'm sorry, it's just a tiny portion of the town, but it is a big safety deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two. One, in terms of the volume of trucks, I would recommend, similar to what Ms. Clemens did, giving the County Commissioner, who represents your district, which would be Commissioner McFall, a call. He did, I chatted with him briefly about this issue this afternoon, and he did mention that, you know, that agreement is something that they review on a regular basis. So, them hearing from Fremont County residents that, you know, there are these concerns, and that the volume has gone way up since the change from TSEC to wholesome, I think would be incredibly helpful. Their BOCC, their Board of County Commissioners, meetings are on Tuesday mornings, so either calling him, as Ms. Clemens did, or showing up to those, I think could be, could be really helpful. I did also wanna flag the one other item that we had said that we would look into, and that's part of the noise ordinance conversation this evening, is this idea of working with CDOT to do inspections, to ensure that there aren't modifications to mufflers and to engine systems. I'm wondering if we have a timeline on when those would actually begin, because I think that that would also enable us to hopefully catch some of these trucks that are noisier rather than quieter.
That's Colorado State Patrol, and I know Chief Schick has reached out to try and get something scheduled. I don't know if, Chief, do you have any update on that?
Unfortunately, I do not. I haven't heard back from the sergeant, but I have, I'm in his queue. I sent him communication a couple weeks ago. So, if I don't hear from him this week, I'll contact his captain.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to Chris Moffett, regarding the pool.
My name's Chris Moffett. I'm a citizen of Canyon City, and also the president of Royal Gorge Rio, your local river-based nonprofit. And there were two issues I wanted to address tonight. One, I know the Black Hills property is up for discussion this evening, and I'm just really excited about it, and support this council going forward on that project, and whatever you guys have going on. So, thanks for doing that. Also, I'm here to support the public pool, and more specifically, an indoor option. I wanted to point out, you know, we had some discussion earlier this evening about safety, and how swimming is a life skill that is critical for children to learn. One of the statistics that was brought up earlier was like, you're 88% more safe around water, something like that. It was a great statistic, don't remember it exactly, but having an indoor pool would provide year-round swimming lesson availability, that would lessen the queue on the swimming lessons in general. Having children myself, it's just almost impossible to get them in swimming lessons when we had two pools in the county, and now that we have one, it was like, you know, Night of the Living Dead at the pool. Like, everyone's lined up clawing at the door, trying to get signed up on the list before the next people were. So, this pool would be great to have for our community. And I know there are some citizens' concerns about whether or not it will make money, but I'd like to point out the great things in our community that we have that also don't really make us money, but are critical for us to have. Like, our fire department, they make us zero money, but they're great to have around, great for safety. The police department, y'all are awesome, but, you know, you cost us money, but you protect us. We love having them. The parks department, another one. They cost us money, but we have all these lovely parks in this community. So, I think as a citizen of Canyon City, I'm ready to, you know, tighten my belt a little bit, and pay that extra $7 a month, so that we could have a nice, nice pool for our community. So, as the president of Royal Gorge Rio, and a private citizen, I just wanna say, go for option B, please, indoor pool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Is it Kyle Horn? Are you the same Kyle Horn that was up earlier?
It's an optical illusion done with mirrors. Couple things that I just wanna point out, I know that you all have to make a decision, and the board has made their statements, but I just wanted to share a couple of things that I didn't have the opportunity earlier. Chris just mentioned some of his recreation essential service. I get asked this all the time, you know, we're not a first responder. However, you can use the recreation district's facilities, as well as city parks, 365 days a year. That has an impact on mental health, that has an impact on your quality of life. Recreation is 100% essential service, and if you don't believe it, take every park, trail, program, open space out of town. Do you have a community you want to live in? That is the question that you have to ask yourself. We have increased our programs drastically, because the community has asked them, not because we necessarily have said we want to, it's because the community has wanted them, and it's our job to respond, and to provide those opportunities. So, recreation is 100% essential service in any community. The cost of year-round versus seasonal, we hear that all the time, the differences between option A and option B is at $12 million. It is. The cost for an indoor doubles. And the reason is, is you have different finishing that has to be done, you have a different building, you have humidities, you have treated water, you have a different type of gutter system, you have a more robust HVAC system, a more robust filtration system. It drastically goes up. Should a pool be $200,000 to $500,000? I wanna make sure you're aware that each individual filtration system is going to run you at least $200,000. You're already close to the $500,000 number, and you haven't even dug the hole yet. So, it does get there. The other thing is, is that the cost of these facilities are going up. The facilities, 10 years ago, were $180 a square foot. They're over $450 a square foot now, it's more like $480. They will be at 800 per square foot, that is their projection by the year 2034. That is not for an indoor, that's for an outdoor. If you want the indoor, you have to double it. The cost is only going to go up. We have to strike while we can. And I did wanna mention, we did have a group of citizens that formed a community group that advised the folks that were our consultants. Unanimously, they went with option B. So, I wanna make sure that we point that out, and you had some people I consider very conservative people in that group, and they unanimously, to my surprise, chose option B. I encourage you to work with the recreation district, and we appreciate your support and the fact that four government entities are in lockstep in this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. Randy Escobal, would you like to speak again?
Sorry, you guys are gonna, some of you are listening to this again, so, thank you for being here tonight. We gather not just as individuals, but as a community united by a shared vision, a vision to bring back something that has so much more than just a place to swim. We are here to restore a vital resource that will enrich lives, protect our children, and strengthen the bonds between us. I've been asked why I'm so passionate about bringing a pool back to Canyon City, and for me, it's deeply personal. When my son was younger, he had an accident that limited his ability to participate in many activities. Swimming was one of the activities that he could do, and it was one place where he felt like an equal, where he wasn't left out or treated differently from his peers. A neighbor, who has now become a friend through my pool journey, put it perfectly. A swimming pool is a great equalizer, and it truly is. As I've spoken with many citizens on my journey, I am, Randy, and I started Citizens for a Pool. We started out as a grassroots citizen group, and now we are 501(c)(3). I was talking with two individuals, one is a business owner here in town, and they both had talked about how they previously weren't, they were opposed to previous efforts. But after talking to them, them learning the facts, they fully support this initiative this time. They see how a tax-funded community pool can benefit our town and its citizens. A community pool is more than a place just to swim, it's an investment in our health, our children's safety, and our community's future. It promotes wellness by providing a space for exercise and relaxation for people of all ages. It helps teach our kids lifesaving skills, and gives them a safe environment to learn and grow. And it's a place where families and neighbors can come together, building stronger bonds and a more connected community. Moreover, a well-maintained, accessible pool can enhance property values and attract new residents, boosting the local economy. It's a resource that benefits everyone, regardless of age or income, making our town a more inclusive and vibrant place to live. Did you know that out of 66 towns in Colorado with populations over 7,000, Canyon City is the only one without a public swimming pool within three miles? This is not just a statistic, sorry, it's a call to action. We owe it to ourselves, to our families, and especially to our children, to provide a safe, accessible place where they can learn to swim and enjoy the water, especially with us having a river running through our town. According to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, drowning remains the number one cause of death among children ages one to four. It is the second-leading cause of death for children's ages five to 14. These are not just numbers, these are lives, precious lives that could be saved with something as simple and powerful as swim lessons. In fact, swim lessons have been shown to reduce the risk of drowning by 88%. Think about that. By giving our children the opportunity to learn to swim, we are giving them a nearly 90% better chance of staying safe around water. This is not just about having fun in the summer, this is about safety and life itself. A community pool is more than a place to cool off on a hot day, it's where our children can gain confidence and learn essential life skills. It's where families can come together, where friendships are made, and where we all can find a sense of belonging. It's a place that can be the heartbeat of the community. We have the opportunity to make a real lasting effort, difference here. By supporting the efforts to bring back our community pool, we are saying that we value life, we value safety, and we value the shared experience that make Canyon City such a vibrant place to live. Let's come together to ensure that no more children are at risk simply because they didn't have a chance to learn to swim. Let's bring back our community pool, not just as a facility, but as a beacon of hope, safety, and unity for everyone in Canyon City. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Angela here?
Yeah.
Would you like to come in?
My name is Angela Evigash. I am the president of our local swim team. The Canyon City Swim Team is for Fremont County children ages six and up who want to improve their swimming skills and compete. We are a seasonal club team, meaning we practice and compete during the summer season. Losing our competition pool in Canyon has been very difficult. We are currently practicing at the Florence Pool with limited resources. We can survive for a few seasons there, but we will not thrive again until we have a competition pool back in our community. An indoor swim facility will open numerous opportunities for Fremont swimmers. I'd like to share some of these prospects from a swim team perspective. An indoor pool will double our practice season, since seasonal clubs can begin in April. Each year, our team waits until the end of May, when the pool opens for the summer, to start practicing, and then immediately, we start competing with little preparation. An indoor pool will enable our club to become a year-round team, meaning the ability to practice and compete throughout the year. Home meets, which bring revenue to our team and our community, could be hosted multiple times a year. An indoor lap pool will enable Canyon to have high school teams, since the girls' season is in the winter, and the boys' season is in the spring. An indoor facility will allow swimmers time to train on their own, outside of team practice, and to continue training during the off-season. Year-round swimming will open up more collegiate opportunities. It is very challenging for a seasonal swimmer to excel in the same capacity as a year-round swimmer, and college scholarship opportunities are competitive. A year-round pool, option B, will have an exponential positive impact for all the residents of Canyon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean Snowden? Sean?
I'd just like to say I was very encouraged about the swing pool conversation earlier. And I'm a member of the only gym here in town that has a swim- And I'm a member of the only gym here in town that has a swimming pool. And so I swim. Everyone I've talked to in the gym and elsewhere think it would be a real waste of money if we only go with the three-month option. Since we're going to be spending millions of dollars, why don't we have it open 12 months out of the year? And it would really serve the community quality of life, and people will, I, at the gym that I'm at, they, a lot of elderly folks, and I think maybe the marketing, Kyle, that we talked about earlier, could target the elderly a little more also. And they become aware of how beneficial it is to work your body, you know, use it, don't, if you don't use it, you lose it, right? So that's all I wanted to say was, it's, year-round is the way to go. Everyone I've talked to in town, everyone at the gym, 12 months versus three months, if we're gonna do it, gosh, it's, I think it's a no-brainer for 12 months. And when I swim at the gym, I'm all year-round, I'm a lap swimmer and everything else, working out. It's packed. It's packed. It's the only pool in town that anyone can swim in, you know? And in the wintertime, it's packed, so it'll get used. Please vote for option B, the indoor pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks for inviting the rec district to come share our opinions about the pool. But I wanted to come and just, I'm kind of winging it here, so sorry if I'm a little bit, you know, unpracticed, but I just wanted to come up and speak to you as a citizen. I'm also a citizen of Canyon City, who has participated on the swim team for like, you know, eight, 10 years, standing on the decks of that pool. And I also have a budding kayaker who is learning to, you know, navigate the river. So participating in pool and the water sports and all the great things, you know, we do all the things that Canyon City has to offer, and I love it. But I really think that, you know, the pool helps to fill out that portfolio for those of us that love the recreation opportunities in town. And what I wanted to also highlight that I am, I wanted to disclose, when you asked a little earlier about campaigning for the pool, I'm also helping with the campaign for the pool as a citizen, of course, not as a rec district member, but, so I really, I am looking forward to hearing how you vote, and I really am looking forward to seeing a new pool built for our community. And thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there a Nick Satori? Is that how you say that? Sorry. In your case, we have two minutes. Just kidding.
Well, I just want to say thank you guys again for inviting us tonight. It was very exciting actually to start this process. Thinking back, it's been over a year that this journey began when we had to close that pool down, and it was a horrible thing to do for the community. But I'm encouraged by the future and kind of what I'm hearing and seeing. So I've been, I represent the, I'm representing the board for the rec district, and I can just tell you that this is a decision and something that we've been putting a lot of time, a lot of effort into. You know, I felt like this is one of the biggest decisions that we have to make going forward, because if we make the wrong one, our community's gonna suffer for many more years. We've already been without a pool for a while, and it's showing, I think. So in saying that, I'd just like to say, you know, the board has definitely went through the wringer with this. We started last May. We've been blessed with the partnership that you guys have provided. Ryan's been great working with us along the way. It's been great that the school districts has stepped up and really wanted to join us and help us. And so I see this as being a huge success going forward. I just want to tell you the reasons why we decided, and I can tell you unanimously, last week, we had a board meeting, and we all felt the same, that option B is gonna be the best option for our community going forward, to enhance what we're doing, to provide good things for our students. And a lot of the reasons have to do with, you know, the return on investment. It just makes sense fiscally to be able to provide services for more people year-round. That's really what it comes down to. Days of use, it provides a great opportunity for our students. The thought of having a swim team is huge. I know there's a lot of people that's been traveling for years and years to be a part of the Piranha, so I've seen what the high school has done with the mountain biking program, and it's so exciting that just the opportunity that those kids have had and how far they've come, and they've really become a big thing in the state. So I'm hoping that we can do that with the pool as well. So I'd also like to say that the rec district is still one of the lowest-funded government entities, rec districts in the state per capita. I think the only one that's lower than us is Penrose. So along with this, we will be seeking a mill levy increase, and I just want to be very clear with everybody that it's probably the lowest mill levy increase that's been requested in many years. Four mills equals about $80 a year for the average $300,000 home. So for this indoor option, we took this into consideration. We know that this community has a hard time accepting taxes and increasing things, but we also know that when we invest in our community, it grows in a good way. So we're hoping that the city will, or we're hoping that the voters will see that. And we know that a big part of that comes along with education, and I feel like we have a really good plan. As you can see, Randy Escobell has done a great job. She's very passionate, and she's gonna be leading the charge on that. So I'm really excited about that. So I just want to say thank you, and I hope that you guys will be in support of option B, and we can look forward to a great pool in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any council comments or announcements, council? Okay. Let's move on, and then I, at this time, I'd like to invite-
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to get you a bigger hand.
I know. If this is time for council member announcements, I'd just like to mention briefly that tomorrow, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM is the monthly community advisory group meeting for the Lincoln Park Cotter Superfund Site. We're meeting, it's another hybrid meeting, in-person and by Zoom. This time, it's at the recreation district offices on Ash Street. So we welcome the public to be involved with the very comprehensive and longstanding effort to get that superfund site cleaned up. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Your yellow hand's still up. Oh, there it goes. So at this time, then, I'd like to invite our human resources director, Butch Bachelor, to come forward and with his commendation, recognition.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, other distinguished members of the dais. We've now come to the fun part of the meeting, where we get to recognize our employees for their accomplishments. And in looking at the back of the room, either the chief's gonna be doing some recognition in addition to what I'm doing, or we're expecting a very severe riot. I'm not sure which it is, but tonight, I have the honor of recognizing one of our employees. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do it last month, but we're recognizing employee for 10 years of service to the city. Valerie, would you please come up? Valerie Knudsen was, on July 15, 2014, Valerie assumed the duties of the municipal court clerk for the city of Canyon City, a position she continues to hold. And Valerie, I will give you this and this, and thank you. And I will now turn over the microphone for some remarks from her supervisor.
I want to thank Valerie for her dedicated years of service. The court runs extremely smoothly because of all the hard work that Valerie and her team put in on a weekly basis, daily basis. It wouldn't run without you, and we really appreciate everything that you do. Valerie has been working along with the other agencies, our law enforcement agencies, with the implementation of Tyler and Tyler Courts, and that has disrupted a lot of our normal processes. And Valerie has been able to, and her team have been able to gracefully move through this process and continue to keep things moving along. And I know we've got a couple bumps in the road as far as the system goes, but I know with your leadership, we'll get there. So thank you for 10 years of service.
Thank you so much.
And I would echo that, what Ryan says. It speaks to Valerie's perseverance. Anytime you launch a new platform and you still remain with your employer, that's a pretty significant thing. So if I would, if you would all be so kind as to step down in front of the dais so we Okay, you gotta get from later.
Thank you.
We would now invite our chief of police to the podium.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Mr. Batchhoutter said, we're gonna recognize some service excellence from our team at the PD. Our folks provide that high level of service pretty routinely, but, you know, every once in a while, there are some cases that really rise to the top based on their committed and dedicated service out there in the community. And we have, we have three of those cases we'd like to recognize, folks, this evening. If I could get officers Austin Maudlin and Jordan St. Louis to come up forward? Oh, yeah. That's the prettiest PD member there. So on, in June of this past year, or this year, at about 1:00 AM in the morning, these two officers got a call in the 1100 block of Monroe Avenue regarding two suspicious persons. And they were on bicycles and hanging around some houses. And, you know, this past six or seven months, we've had a number of trespass, vehicle trespasses and a significant amount of property taken. So we were thankful that our community called these subjects in. These two officers rolled in and very quickly found both of the individuals, and subsequent to their investigative efforts, they were able to determine that they were in possession of handguns and narcotics. What's really is remarkable here is that they worked as they trained, in that they were a team. And Officer Maudlin directed the investigation, and his cover was Jordan St. Louis. And as they moved through this incident, they pretty quickly realized that the individual was hosting a firearm underneath his, in his armpit, and they were, they were pretty quick to identify that and bring the subjects into custody. It's one of those situations that you just never know, and things happen very quickly on the street. So the fact that they were, they were able to stay focused on what they were doing, maintain officer safety during this event was a matter of great significance. And because of that, we got these individuals off the street, and we were able to get some, get a gun off the street and send both of our officers home. And in light of their actions that evening, I'd like to offer them a chief's commendation You guys just stay right there. We're gonna get pictures, because I know how much they love pictures. Next, I'm gonna go, I'm going to, I'm gonna go on to recognize Officer Michael Gordon and K-9 Officer Zach Fry. Come on up, gentlemen. Again, these two officers out being very proactive, conducting their duties in a committed fashion. Officer Gordon stopped a vehicle on North, North Ninth Street and Whipple Avenue, contacted the driver, and began looking beyond the stop. And that's, that's something that we teach these officers from day one. The traffic stop is just the beginning of your, your interaction with the drivers, and you need to be very aware of, you know, situations that may present weapons, you need to be aware of situations that may present narcotics or fruits of other crimes. Don't just focus in on the traffic stop. So Mr. Gordon was doing that, and during that time, he determined that there were some things raising his suspicions, and contacted Officer Fry and K-9 Cassio to come by and conduct an open-air sniff. And when he, when he presented his dog, the dog alerted to the presence of narcotics in the vehicle. And based on this traffic stop, they were able to recover nearly 2,000 fentanyl pills and 105 grams of methamphetamine and five grams of black tar heroin. Interdicting those narcotics during that traffic stop prevented untold tragedies throughout our community, and I thought they were certainly worthy of recognition this evening. So I wanted to present both of them with a chief's commendation as well. He said it's all the dog. It's really not. I've seen a lot of police canines, and it, you get out of it what you put in it. It's any, it's like any other program. So Zach being committed to training with Cassio and presenting him in the proper manner and reading him properly is, you know, tantamount to the success here. The last one I would like to bring up Sergeant Nick Mall and Officer Will Olenby. Here recently, on, in July, the latter parts of July, at about 3:00 in the afternoon, these, these two and other team members associated with their shift were dispatched to 2100 block of Central Avenue on a report of shots fired call. When officers arrived on the scene, they discovered evidence that led them to believe multiple shots were fired at a house and a vehicle in that location. Officers quickly went to work collecting statements and evidence and were able to develop information on a possible suspect. They, they even had the foresight to start engaging our criminal analyst, who worked, has developed a network with the Department of Corrections and the parole elements there. And they were quickly able to not only identify the suspect, but what he was probably going to be wearing that day and possibly driving. Following up on this information, they were able to locate- Following up on this information, they were able to locate the subject and the vehicle. They attempted to make a traffic stop. Again, this is 3:00 in the afternoon. And when they did attempt to stop the suspect, he, he fled in his vehicle. After a brief but rather quick vehicle pursuit, the officers saw an opportunity to execute a vehicle pin, pursuit intervention, intervention technique. And they safely pushed and pinned this vehicle between a telephone pole and two CCPD vehicles. This is remarkable in itself because these are rapidly evolving situations. And these two and their team are, are chasing an armed fugitive that just demonstrated a capacity to shoot into a occupied dwelling. And as they initiated this pin maneuver, they have no idea if he's holding a gun in his lap, if he's taking aim at them, but never once did they waver. They stayed committed to this act. Once the vehicle was disabled, they were very quickly and, and methodically able to take the subject into custody. And it should be noted that they found that firearm that was used in that event, or what we believe was used in that event, within the vehicle, within the driver's grasp. The efforts by these officers to conduct this maneuver and safely end a dangerous vehicle pursuit before the vehicle could be driven into a more populated area of the city during the mid-afternoon hours, coupled with the fact that he was, he just committed a violent felony with a firearm and not knowing if he was armed again, I, I genuinely believe these two officers are team members, these are, this is nothing short of heroic by all of these officers to funnel that real-time information from the crime analyst, be able to filter that information through intelligence communities and, and put it into a package to identify and apprehend a dangerous subject. Because of their efforts, a dangerous felon was taken off the streets that day and required to answer, he'll be required to answer for the chaos he created. And in light of these events, I'd like to recognize Master Police Officer Will Olenby and Sergeant Nicholas Maul with a chief's commendation.
Absolutely.
Okay, I would, let's go to the consent agenda, have the city administrator review the agenda and the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 9A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on August 5th, the general government meeting on August 7th, and the special meeting on July 29th, which was the art committee, July 30th, which was for photos, July 31st, which was the water committee, and August 5th, which was an executive session. 9B authorizes the mayor to appoint Fred Tony to the Board of Adjustment. 9C, approve fiscal year 2024 community agency funding for round two. 9D authorizes disposal of surplus equipment. 9E is to receive and file monthly budget summary. 9F is to receive and file cash dispersments. 9G is also to receive and file cash dispersments. And then I, I would also ask that you move the pool ballot measure up above the administrator report because we do have a lot of people here for that particular topic.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on, Amy?
Thank you. Yes, I had a couple of questions about the community agency funding. I understand that city staff is recommending approval of all but one of the proposals. And I did just want to speak briefly about the proposal that isn't being recommended for funding. If you could just address a little bit more about why that is?
Yeah, we had three staff members that were part of the committee. I think staff had reached out to council members, but I don't know that we received any additional feedback. But of the three, I think two voted against it. They didn't feel that it was in line with the premise of the community agency funding. However, if city council would like to include it, staff has no objection.
If I could, I've attended one of the meetings of this organization and I would be happy to shed a little bit of additional light as to why it may qualify particularly under the quality of life proviso for this particular pot of funding. Essentially, the Big Horn Roundtable is an effort to bring together all of our local landowners in the region, along with state, local, federal entities that have a say when it comes to outdoor recreation. And its stated purpose and intent is to improve the recreation and conservation in our community, which I think directly contributes to our quality of life. This is a nascent effort. It is just now being stood up. They are seeking GOCO funding to help with some of the costs of it. But certainly, one of the things that GOCO looks for is buy-in from local governments and local municipalities. So, given that it's, it's a relatively small dollar amount, I think it's $500 that they had requested to help with these kind of startup funds. And certainly, the meeting that I attended was, there were 20 folks in the room, including county commissioners, the Canyon City Rec Department, along with Forest Service BLM and many others. And I think that this is a really vital effort for our community to ensure that we are coordinating amongst ourselves as to what we are trying to do with regard to recreation and conservation. And again, I think that if we, the, the more coordination that we can do in that regard, the more our quality of life will improve because our recreation and conservation opportunities will, will multiply.
Thank you, Amy. Jerry?
I just want to say I approve with adding that to the community funding round two.
John?
Ryan, could you share with us what the, what the, the specific reasoning was that they felt it did not?
I, I think it had to do with the fact that it was just covering meetings. I think it was more the use of the funds more than anything. I, I don't know that I have any more specifics than that.
Okay, I'm trying to, I'm trying to search my memory banks here for the community agency fundy folder, you know? And, and, and I don't necessarily remember something about the use of the funds. I mean, there, there, there were, in the community agency funding, if it was not specific to Canyon City, that could be a, a particular, you know, concern. But you don't have any other information?
No, we, we discussed it this afternoon. And as, as I mentioned, we, as staff, we don't have any concerns, including if that's council's wish.
Thank you.
Is council's wish then to add that back into the community funding? Do we motion on that, or we just?
When you make the motion to approve the consent agenda and the agenda, if you could just include that, that would be all we need.
Would someone like to take an attempt at that? Would you go, Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Chapman. I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment to 9C to add funding for all applicants, including the Big Horn Roundtable, which I believe is through Fremont Adventure Recreation. And that we move item 11F to be our new 11A.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on that motion? No, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. So, we're going to go ahead and move item F, which reads as follows. It's introduction and first reading to the title own, by title only of Ordinate 6, Series 2024, Community Pool Sales Tax Ballot Language. I would invite the city administrator to give a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have had a lot of public comments and a session before this regarding this particular item. I'm not going to go into all of the details of the memo, but I do want to call out a couple things. It was mentioned the steering committee for the feasibility study. I do want to call out those individuals for assisting with, with that part of the project. Randy Escobal with Citizens for a Pool, Mac Ward with the Golden Age Center, Brian Van Eyewarden with the Canyon City Schools, Ed Norden also participated. And then we had participants from the Rec District Board, which was Nick Sartori and Melissa Smines, and from city council, it was Tim Dennehy and Emily Tracy. Before you, you have a, a choice. You can either not put anything on, on the ballots, or you have two options in the, in the packet for you to put on the ballot. The first option is a 25, 0.25% sales tax increase for the outdoor option of the pools. That, that particular pool option is $12.8 million. The second ballot, set of ballot language is a 0.3% increase. That would approve the combination indoor/outdoor swimming facility with a price tag of $24.8 million. Both of the ballots measures have the contingency language in there that if the bond issue does not pass, the sales tax will fail. So, both the sales tax initiative and the bond initiative from the Rec District would have to pass in order for this project to move forward. As Councilmember Schmisher mentioned, during the previous session, there is a third ballot item, which is the mill levy increase. The, the language for the ballots does not include anything that would deny the sales tax if the mill levy increase does not move forward. I believe the best thing to do would be to address that through the intergovernmental agreement with the, with the Rec District. But again, that would be up to council's discretion. Happy to take any questions. I believe I've, I've covered the majority of what we are looking for as far as a motion for tonight.
Before we do that, could I ask Todd Swindell to come forward and have any questions or discuss the, he's the company, the bonding company, correct?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Todd Snidow. I'm with RBC Capital Markets out of Denver. And I'm really here to answer any questions that you might have about the rationale for multiple questions and the, the fact that the district is going to be pursuing a general obligation bond to evidence the issuance of those bonds if the sales tax is approved. It's interesting, I'm working right now on three different pool initiatives around the state, so it must be, they were all installed the same year and they've all gone defunct. So, I think what's unusual is the amount of support that you have here locally, the city's willingness to put forth a sales tax measure, the Rec District's interest in pursuing a GO bond, and then also addressing other operational needs through an additional property tax levy. In the, the Town of Eagle, we're working on a, a pool initiative again, same, same thing. Their pool closed, and they combined the Rec District with the sales tax from these, from the Town of Eagle. And so, that's kind of a nice thing, I think, that the, the citizens appreciate when you have local governments cooperate to accomplish these measures. But the, the other one I'm working on right now is up in Evergreen. That's also going to be to expand the recreational and aquatic facilities in the Recreation Center. And both Eagle and Evergreen will be using certificates of participation. Unfortunately, that is something that is not available in this circumstance because those districts both have substantial assets they can pledge as collateral in that sort of a circumstance. Whereas, the limited mill levy here in Canyon City has really prevented the district from having assets to be able to pledge. So, again, the general obligation bond is the format that we'll need to be able to offer those bonds into the market and find investors to purchase those. But I don't want to kill you with mill levies and things like that. I just, I'd love to answer any questions you might have specifically about the, the need for the.
Is there something, you said GO bond, is that just the name of your company, or is it?
No, I'm sorry. GO bond, a general obligation bond, is one backed by property taxes.
I sort of thought that. Then on your schematic here, it has choices. Would the city or the Rec District do the choice? It has the, at the 0.3, it's 25 years and 20 years. Is that a choice that we would make, or?
It, it kind of ties back, I think, to which option you, you pursue. If you go for the less expensive outdoor only option, a 20-year imposition of a quarter cent increase would be adequate to support that. If you're going to go for the more elaborate option B, you would need more money. And so, we think that that would be something that would be accomplished with a 25-year imposition of a 0.3 cent increase. So, it's really, it's, the, the associated increase on the sales tax kind of ties back to which option of pools you prefer.
And the, the obligation, we're consenting to pay through sales tax, a bond, the obligation of which would be borne by the Rec District.
Correct.
And, okay, so, because they don't have any assets necessarily?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions of council? That was pretty easy.
So, just to clarify that, Mr. Mayor, so the, the sales tax initiative would have to be passed as a city initiative. The city would enter into a, into governmental agreement with the Rec District to have a pass-through of that sales tax to the Rec District for the payment of those bond obligations.
All right, thank you, Ryan. And just a comment, I've never seen, I've been here a long time, and I've never seen so many parts of this community come together, county, city, school, and anybody else to say, we, and we do need to do this, by the way, because I have grandchildren that should learn how to swim. And throwing them in the Arkansas has not been an option. I've thought about it, but it's not. So, any other questions from council? Yes, Amy, go ahead.
Thanks. Just a quick one. Given that the GO bond is borne by the Rec District, then the liability of the sales tax doesn't produce sufficient revenue for whatever reason is also borne by the Rec District?
Yes, so the, the, the general obligation bond or the GO bond, the, the security behind that is what's called the ad valorem tax pledge, which basically gives the Rec Board the ability each December to set a mill levy sufficient to make the payments coming in the, in the following year. But again, the question will also say that's only something they can invoke if the sales tax is inadequate in that period. And again, we've used, I believe, the historical data, and we believe that very conservatively it will be adequate. The district has, excuse me, the, the city has seen an increase in sales tax collections. And so, again, we've assumed no increase whatsoever. So, the current collections will be adequate. But, but again, I think that's important, and I know that we'll be communicating that in the campaign because the, the question would allow a property tax to be imposed should there be inadequate sales tax to make those payments.
That's really helpful to know, Mr. Swindell, that the most conservative estimates were used. I mean, when you look at our historical sales tax increases year over year, if you're holding steady at where we are right now, that's a, a very conservative projection to ensure that, that those obligations would be able to be met. So, thank you for that.
So, just to add a little bit to that, since the year 2000, there have only been two years where sales tax decreased. One was the 2000 tech bubble, the other one was the 2008 housing crisis. One was the 2000 tech bubble, the other one was the 2008 housing crisis.
Well, in this then, so this resolution that I'm looking at is, it doesn't define which one of the things we were voting on. Or is it?
Yeah, so in your packet, you have two options. You have the point two-five option and the point three option. So when the motion is made, whoever makes the motion will have to say point three or point two-five.
Well, I saw that, I wasn't.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions of council? Would someone like to attempt a motion? Thank you, Todd.
My pleasure.
I will make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, John, go ahead.
I move that we approve a bill for Ordinance Number Six, Series of Twenty Twenty Four, an ordinance calling for special municipal election and referring a ballot issue to the registered electors of the City of Canyon City, providing for temporary zero point three zero percent sales and use tax to be levied for the purpose of pledging the revenue for the Canyon City area metropolitan recreation and park district for debt incurred to construct, to construct a community recreation pool and related capital improvements.
I second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on that motion? Does that cover what we're after?
Yes, sir.
It does. Even the attorney is shaking her head. That's a really good sign. It is. All right. Any discussion?
I have a brief, I have a brief comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, there, I'm sorry, your yellow hand is up.
I know, I don't know what to do with that.
Emily.
I just want to say real briefly, it's been a great opportunity to serve on the Pool Feasibility Study Committee. It allowed, I think, Councilmember Dennehy and I, and of course, our city administrator, Ryan Stevens, has been directly involved in this all along. But it's been a great opportunity to really see what the community is interested in, will support, to see what we can do. And it's important to point out that as a city council and REC District Board probably sees this too, that this is a generational opportunity for us. It's been since the nineteen sixties, when the Ica Bona Pool was approved and built. So this is a generational issue, not only opportunity, but I see it as a responsibility for the community to make a good decision on this, place it on the ballot for the voters, hopefully to support and pass. It is, as has been mentioned, it's great to see the multiple local governments cooperating on this. The Recreation District, the City School District, and then of course, the recent announcement by Fremont County Commissioners, their offer of some of their federal ARPA funds to go toward this effort if the ballot issues are successful. And I think it's important, as I'm hearing people support option B, I think it is important to support that option. You know, it's roughly twice the cost, but it's nearly four times the benefit to have a pool available year-round for all of the things that it can offer for every age in our community, every citizen. So really happy that we're at the point of making a decision about what we want to put on the city ballot for this. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. I appreciate that. We're at the, shall we vote? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay, pass by you and I'll vote. Thank you. So you all need to get some new suntan lotion by twenty twenty-seven. Okay? Thank you so much. All right. And now, we've been long waiting for the administrator's report and it's here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things that didn't make it into the administrator report. Jim Johnson, our fleet's manager, has announced his retirement. His last day will be October fourth, so we will be gearing up for his departure. And then with the remaining funds from the community agency funding, Rick Harmon is currently working on a project for community building with an organization called Wish for Wheels. They focus on building bikes for second graders. And they could potentially use some additional funding for that project. They do community builds with businesses and, you know, it could be different departments from the city that go out and help build these bikes. Each bike costs about two hundred dollars. It comes with a helmet. And that's for needy kids within the second grade age range. If that is something that council is open to, we can bring something back to the next meeting. The build would be October fifteenth.
Discussion? Amy?
I would want to know what local five oh one C three they're partnered with and what specifically the community agency funding would be going to support. I was super excited to see a number of local businesses already contributing and working towards this, but would, very supportive of the idea, but would definitely want those details brought back.
So this would be to support additional bikes being built with the potential of city staff helping build the bikes on the build day.
Right, but what, which five oh one C three, local five oh one C three, would we be giving the funding to and?
We can get that information.
All of those kinds of details would be really helpful. Thanks.
Anyone else? Is that it?
That is, that is it, sir. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions, our administrator? Oh, come on, there's got to be a tough question out there somewhere. All right. John, sorry.
Thank you. The, I note that we're negotiating with CDOT about reestablishing bus stand and that they have a preferred location, which is probably not council's preferred location. How much are we? Are we likely to prevail in specifying a location with them?
It is a stop agreement that needs to be approved by City Council. So if City Council doesn't approve the stop agreement, the stop doesn't happen.
Thank you.
I think, oh, Amy, go ahead.
Maybe a slightly different way of asking that question. Do you think CDOT would be amenable to a different location?
We have proposed other locations. This is the one they keep coming back to, but we can continue to look at other options.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
Could I add a comment to, thank you? Without prolonging the discussion on that, I, there have been often on discussions now with CDOT for many months on restoring the stop. I think one of the primary things to keep in mind is they are limited on where they can make right turns, left turns with a bus. There's just not that many places along Highway fifty that work for a bus to be, you know, it's one way, it's westbound one part of the day, eastbound the other part of the day. So they really have to have an ability to make those right turns and left turns off and onto the highway. So that's the primary issue, I think, in looking at what the options might be. But certainly, you know, we can have far more discussion about that.
Thank you, Emily. I was thinking in front of the police department. Okay. Well, no humor. No, okay. Tight terms? And so appoint the member of the planning commission. I would invite the city administrator to give us a staff report.
Yes, sir. As decided at the August fifth meeting, City Council would need to choose a new planning commission member. We had two applicants, both applicants previously interviewed with City Council. And I will turn it over to our clerk, Cindy Foster Owens, for the process.
For tonight, since we don't have all members here in person, normally I would have you write on a piece of paper and I would read out the votes and who you voted for. Considering we have two people on Zoom tonight, we're going to do it all out loud. So I'll call your name and you tell me which member you'd like to vote for, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Give me one second. I apologize. I'm having problems. I can't see the.
The choices are Aaron Maleko and Fred Tony.
Fred Tony.
Thank you. Councilmember Maloney?
Aaron Maleko.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aaron Maleko.
Councilmember Stein?
Aaron Maleko.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aaron Maleko.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aaron Malenko.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aaron Maleko.
Aaron Maleko is the new planning commissioner, but I do need a motion and a second and a vote, please.
Okay. Would someone like to attempt that? A motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Aaron Maleko to the planning.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Aaron's saying no. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Aaron. That is a, that's a twenty-year commitment, by the way. I'm just kidding. No, it's not. Anyway, all right. The next thing is to authorize the mayor to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the W N Clark Station property. I would ask our administrator for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this one, I'm going to read the memo so I don't forget anything. The attached purchase and sale agreement is for the purchase of the W N Clark property owned by Black Hills Energy. This property is the former site of the Black Hills Energy Power Generation Facility that was built in eighteen ninety-seven. It closed in two thousand and twelve and was demolished in two thousand and fourteen. The closure of the plant was a huge economic loss to the community and the site has been part of city planning efforts to reinvigorate the river corridor and turn it from what was once an industrial focus to a recreational and community amenity focus. The city completed the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan in two thousand and seventeen. That envisioned the future of the entire river core, including the site. The master plan calls for the public access as, calls for public access as this location, including but not limited to parking a parallel river walk trail, rafting takeout, RV camping, and open space. Additional planning at a more detailed level will continue upon the acquisition of the site. Grant funding that we are receiving from GOCO includes planning efforts for the site. In the attached exhibit, the city will acquire Lot Two, which is twenty-one point two-six acres with several utility easements running through the property. These easements have been reviewed with the city planner and public works director to determine if the encumbrances would prevent the city from achieving the master plan goals. Both agree that the city can achieve the master plan goals with the included encumbrances. Once the agreement is signed, a due diligence period will begin with an ending date of December twentieth with a closing date of February twenty-eighth of next year. The reason for the extended timing is due to approval from the Public Utilities Commission. The city is purchasing the property for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is in line with the appraised value. The funds will be coming from a GOCO grant. The city has received GOCO funding for five hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and is using proceeds received from Black Hills for the sale of water rights in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars as matching funds for a project total of eight hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Specifically, the grant will be paying for three hundred thousand dollars in acquisition costs and the balance of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars coming from Black Hills Water Rights proceeds. Staff would recommend approving the purchase and sale agreement with one amendment. We would ask that we change the effective date of the agreement from nineteenth of August to the third of September. That will give us a little bit more time on the front end for title work and some other due diligence things.
Thank you, Ryan. Questions of council? Amy, your lights. You're wearing out your light, Amy. Amy?
Never. I have two questions. One relates to the document review period. Is that the time period during which we would review the EPA, or sorry, the CD P H E findings on the site?
Yeah, part of the reason for extending to December twentieth is to make sure that when we do a phase one assessment that it doesn't timeout on us. Those are only good for six months. I don't want to pay for it twice. So if we can get it as close to the PUC hearing date as possible, that would be great. It does give us more time for the document review period. We do have those documents. I believe they've previously been shared with council. I'm happy to share them again, but.
I'm thinking specifically about our attorney review of those documents.
That would be included in that.
Okay, and that provides sufficient time?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thanks.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, one of the things that this agreement does is it allows the city to review any and all determinations regarding the environmental conditions of the property. And I understand that includes documents generated by the state concerning this property. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, I would think that it would. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty inclusive, I guess.
Okay, and so my follow-up question to that is, what is our plan to review those documents to, to get a copy of? I don't think we have a copy of everything from the state yet. So my question is, how do we plan to get those documents from the state? Or perhaps from Black Hills? They are, I believe, offering them to us in this document, in this agreement. But what's our plan?
Well, I mean, they're obligated to provide those within fourteen days of the effective date, so about mid-September, a little after that. So I mean, that's the plan. That's how these contracts work is they have to deliver a whole bunch of information. If for some reason we don't think we're getting that, everything, then we'll have to take it up with them, that they didn't complete their obligations on that fourteen-day delivery.
Thank you. The, also, there is a contingency period contained in this agreement. And I just ask to be notified as soon as the document is signed and the contingency period begins.
Anyone else? I have a question. In looking at the schematic that I, where is our contemplated access to that property? Is it right off First Street?
It would remain off of First Street. Yes, sir.
And that looked to me like it was part of their easement? So we have agreements for access ingress?
We've talked about shared access agreement on the easement.
Because they do have that concrete road that goes in there. We would essentially share with that?
Yes, sir.
And what is our thought on maintenance or on that? Is that premature?
For the overall site or the road itself?
The road itself, because we're sharing it.
Yeah, I think we would probably have to work out the details of that agreement. It's probably premature for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's going to depend on usage and all those types of things.
Okay. Amy?
Sorry, that does bring another question to mind for me. Do we understand Black Hills intended usage of the site and kind of what that looks like and how that might interplay with what our master plan prescribes?
Their usage is to maintain the transformer station and that easement is, in particular, is to get access to the transformer station.
But do we know how often they would need to access it? If it's a daily, hourly, I mean, is it a?
We do have a representative of Black Hills here who may or may not be able to answer that question, Mr. John V. Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So I don't have a specific answer for you. I can tell you that in addition to maintaining the substation, that there is a portion that we would continue to use as a lay-down yard. And so there will be some traffic. I would say regular traffic would be coming in and out of there. Not overly frequent, but we would still intend to use it for operational purposes.
Would, when you say regular, is that, can you just give me a sense of what it is that we're talking about? If we're using it as a parks and open space, it seems like that would be important to understand.
I'm sorry, I can't give you any more specific than that. I can't begin to guess. It would just be speculation.
I would imagine that would be part of our due diligence. Or not?
That would be helpful to know.
Just an approximation, I think, would be helpful. Because we are going to use it for various recreational purposes.
Right, and I'm sorry, because I'm not part of the operations on a daily basis, I really can't speculate. I'll just have to defer to asking our local team.
But there is someone that could possibly answer that question.
I would imagine, yes.
Sure. Okay.
Great, thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, just kind of a follow-up question on that. A lay-down yard, and I understand the general meaning of that term and especially when it comes to construction items. Does Black Hills intend to use the lay-down yard for parking?
I cannot answer that. I honestly don't know. I cannot answer that. I honestly don't know. I just know that there's a small portion next to the substation that we've retained for operational purposes.
I appreciate that, but so if you could, if someone is gonna answer that question for us, that would be very good.
Sure.
Kathy?
Yeah, just as a follow-up to where John is, I know Main Electric has had a lot of their equipment there periodically as they were doing upgrades, and so that would be probably what we're kind of getting at, is the fact in and out of big equipment while they're working on transmission lines and things that way.
Yeah, what I can tell you is, there's a fairly small portion of the parcel that is being retained, so I can't imagine it's gonna be that robust, but I just can't speak to it.
Okay. I think, again, that might be part of our due diligence, so we would wanna confront that question. Okay. Thank you, John. Anybody? Well, you, are you going on to your...
Can I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am. You go right ahead.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution eleven, series of twenty-twenty... Nope, that is the wrong one. Apologies. I move that we approve, approving the purchase and sale agreement for the W.N. Clark property, changing the date, the effective date to September third.
Second.
Second, thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, just really quick, since the new one up here, can, we schedule a time to go look at, tour the property one more time? I know we've got due diligence and all that, and I'm for it, so... But I'd like to go see where the easements and what we're talking about. I'd like to go see it, because it's been a long time since I've been out there. Would that be all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So what we would then coordinate that with, Ryan, you can record that with Jerry, let us know in case other people would want to go, so that Cindy can go ahead and announce that this is an unofficial visit.
We'll notice it and everything, yes, sir.
Okay, right word. Any more discussion? Okay, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Let's go to eleven C, which is Introduction and Adoption by Title Only of Resolution eleven, series twenty-twenty-four, entitled Multi-Modal Master Plan for the City of Canyon City, and ask our administrator for a staff report.
We will have a staff report, actually, from our public works director, Leo Evans.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Leo Evans, Public Works Director. We're here today asking for council approval of our multi-modal master plan. The multi-modal master plan was presented in its draft form at the April seventeenth Vision Committee meeting and revised subsequent to that, based on the public feedback and the council feedback we received. We did post a updated version on July twenty-second to the website and advertised that, distributed that. We did receive three comments on that during the period, which I believe I forwarded to you all on Friday and made part of the public record, so I won't repeat all of those now. But I guess we're here today looking to see if there's any further revisions, or if we would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution eleven and have that plan be part of our permanent record going forward.
Any comments from council? Amy?
Thank you. I had provided a number of, I would call them mostly typographical, but some minor substantive edits, but they may have gotten lost in the ether between my outbox and your inbox. So I did just want to flag that. I don't want to go through two dozen typographical edits on the dais. So if, perhaps we can find the lost email and make those after the fact, if that would be feasible, Attorney Sellers?
Yes, one sec.
Okay. And then I also did just want to flag, I thought some of the comments made by Mr. Ledoux were certainly worth noting and worth making modifications to adjust the plan with regard to, in particular, the, you know, references to Eight Mile Ranch instead of Eight Mile Hill, background photos that are flipped, you know, multi-use path needing a separate crossing structure over Four Mile Canyon Creek. Some minor tweaks, as it were. I think I would largely consider those to be. But I'm not sure if we need to enumerate all of those in a motion, or if we can just...
I think you can make reference to your email and Mr. Ledoux's comments.
Wonderful.
John?
I'm digesting, I'm digesting that. Okay. The, I actually have some additional comments that I have not made yet, and so the... I think, I think the appropriate thing is to just ask that, that they be considered before this comes back to us again, but I do, I do have some additional comments that I would like to make on the plan.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, this is a resolution, so it's only one reading?
Right. Just first reading, and so we do have the opportunity. No?
There's no second reading.
Oh, there's no second reading?
Yes, sir.
Comments from council on that? Would you like to continue on with the reading? Table it, move it to another section, so we have time for that, or what? What's your pleasure?
The... I know that, I know that there, that I've noted some, some, perhaps typographical, but there's a missing sentence, for instance, on page twenty-three, under E. one point five. And on that same page, it says, there's a statement that "The sustainability of the existing transportation network is generally low due to the lack of multimodal facilities, limiting mode choice for user." And I was wondering what the definition of sustainability was.
I don't know that I could answer that right now. I'd have to have my plan in front of me to look that up. There is no ultimate timeline on this. If we would like to table this and bring it back to the next meeting with those comments, rather than trying to figure it out here, I'm more than open to that.
If that would be okay with council, I, there's, I've got some concerns about this plan, and I would like to, I would like to make some further comments on it. And I apologize to council for not having, haven't got those on the record yet. But, but that would be my preference, if we could.
Okay. Amy?
I was going to suggest the same, and I noticed that Councilwoman Tracy also has her hand up.
Oh, Emily?
Yeah, I'm sort of saying me too on that, but also saying we... I guess this is a question. The language in the proposed plan is, either is or will become outdated if we reestablish the bus staying outrider stop. So I wasn't sure if that's something that also should be edited to reflect that in some way, so just throw that out as a question, but I agree with perhaps reconsidering this at the next meeting, so that we can get all the edits in there that we need to. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments on that? I would have a question, Leo. Is that, a multi-modal plan, is that required by state? Or is that something that we just created for Canyon City? Is there other driving for that?
No, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say, this was something that was called out in the master plan, the comprehensive plan that we did a couple of years ago as a, as a next step for looking at mobility within the community.
Okay.
And having a plan for this does help us when we apply for grants as well. It shows that we've prioritized certain things above others, and when we apply for specific grants, having it called out in a plan is typically one of those criteria.
Is it a plan that comes back to council or whoever may be here after a period of time? Is it reviewed, or is it just set and then...
It would need to be updated from time to time. I don't know if there's a set or established timeframe for that, but I believe the resolution does require that any changes or modifications, updates, come back to this body for consideration.
Okay.
And, you know, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago when we were doing the two A discussion, about how you could look at prioritizing certain streets and how they relate to this plan. So, you know, as we move forward with various programs, Safe Routes to School, things like that, you know, looking back at this document and seeing how it ties back to capital improvements in the city would be a key thing. It's gonna be a guiding document for a while.
Okay. It's a pleasure of council to bring it back to another session. Is that, let's do that, okay? And then we have the comments that we can do, and... Do we need a motion?
Yeah, you could do a motion to table it to the next meeting, or whenever you'd like it to come back.
All right, would someone like to attack that, then?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we table a discussion of the comprehensive multi-modal master plan until a future date to be determined.
A second? Second? All right. Any discussions on that motion? Hearing the scene now, would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Okay. And thank you, Leo, for that. And let's move on to D. It's a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance four, series twenty-twenty-four, entitled An Ordinance Appointing Larry Dean Allen as Municipal Judge and Increasing His Compensation for Such Services, and Authorize the Mayor to Sign a Contract for Services, and could have a staff report?
Yes, sir. This is a second reading. We've not received any public comments, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Okay. Any questions from staff? Would you, are you going, is your hand up because you want to attempt a motion?
That is correct.
Let's, John, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance four, series twenty-twenty-four, entitled An Ordinance Appointing Larry Dean Allen as Municipal Judge and Increasing His Compensation for Such Services, and Authorize the Mayor to Sign a Contract for Services on second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kathy, second. Any discussion on that motion? That second? None? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Let's move on to E, Introduction and First Reading by Title Only of Ordinance Five, series twenty-twenty-four, entitled An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Section ten point zero-four point one-six-five of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Vehicle Noise. Could we have a report from the administrator?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance that would address some noise complaints within the city. It is going to create an area that prohibits the compression engine brakes from, on Highway fifty, from First Street to Justice Center. It also would set a penalty, which has not been assigned yet, and I would ask Chief Schick to come up and provide any additional information regarding the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in consultation with the city attorney, we spoke beforehand. We absolutely want to have a penalty that's commensurate with the violation that offers a significant amount of deterrent effect, but we do not have a specific number in mind. We need to go back and do some research. I'm gonna reach out to some other jurisdictions that have similar ordinances and take a look at their fine schedules in relation to this.
There are two readings here. We would recommend setting a fine of five hundred dollars, and then with additional information, that's second reading. We can provide that or change that at that time.
Amy?
Thank you. I had a question for Attorney Sellers in Section fourteen twenty-five B. It states, "Except as provided herein, the use of compression engine brakes shall be prohibited within the city boundaries, specifically along U.S. Highway fifty, between First Street and Justice Center Road, et cetera." Does that mean that the only place within the city that compression engine brakes are prohibited are, is between First and Justice Center Road on Highway fifty?
Yes.
So I have a concern. I don't think we should have use of compression engine brakes within our city limits. We're a residential community, and I think that part of the challenge that a lot of our residents have is the use of compression engine brakes. Given that later in Section fourteen twenty-five B, it states that engine brakes may only be used in emergency or life safety situations, I don't see any harm in restricting the use citywide, and I would be curious as to Chief Schick and Administrator Stevens' thoughts or comments on that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'll take this. So that is a, an excellent question, but in all seriousness, I always, I always want to err on the side of safety. And, you know, my concern is, City Attorney Sellers and I were talking beforehand, is part of the city boundaries is tunnel drive. Coming down out of that quarry, I think it's essential that those folks be able to use those brakes, particularly when they're under load. I am not a truck driver, but I have, I've spoken with Mr. Evans, our public works director, and I would think it's safe to say that he concurs, that that would be the one area. And then again, coming down fifty into the city, that could be a concern for us. I don't know that that would be the responsible thing to do, to limit them being able to use a mechanism that is designed solely to keep those trucks under load, under control.
Yes.
Then, oh, sorry.
Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you. I thought that there was a mechanism to have those compression brakes without a noise. I thought there was a piece of equipment that could be included on the installation of those to where there would be no noise. So to me, that makes it even that. They could come down that hill from the quarry and have quiet and still have safety.
You know something I don't, councilwoman. I, I am under the impression there's a required muffler system designed to mitigate the compression brakes, the noise from the compression brakes, but I'm not familiar with a process that quiets them.
Okay.
I think, you know, as we discussed earlier, with having Colorado State Patrol doing their periodic inspections, I think that will help with that, because I think the problem that we may be seeing in the community is that there are modified muffler systems and exhaust systems. And I think that is what is causing the issues. And, you know, I think, you know, we're looking at all of these different approaches together to try and solve the, solve the overall issue, while still maintaining, you know, the safety of the community.
Okay, but I still, that still creates an issue for tunnel drive, because they're not gonna... Those truck drivers get down the hill and they go through the city, and okay, they don't use their compression brakes or modified compression brakes. They aren't gonna have any problem. Of course, I realize that State Patrol is gonna pull, are they gonna pull everybody over? Or are they gonna put just a certain percentage to where it still allows a certain amount of unqualified? Well, those types of inspections, it's gotta be specific in the, in the operational plan. So you pull over every fifth truck, you pull over every truck, but you have to decide that before you launch the operation. I suspect, and I have not had an opportunity to talk with the first sergeant that lines these up. I emailed him while we were sitting here this evening to try and get some follow-up on that, but I suspect their goal will be to stop every truck. I don't see it, we have so many trucks that we won't be able to accommodate that, but I'm speculating.
Okay.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I have a Ford F-two-fifty Super Duty diesel that has a compression brake, factory-installed, that goes through the muffler system. And so essentially, it's very quiet, and it's not, it's, I'm kind of... it's very quiet, and it's not... it's... I'm kind of in the same boat that Kathy is here. I thought that what we were doing is going after the modified, where aftermarket engine brakes had been added, that were unmuffled. And so, the, you know, we could... it seems to me that we could say, except as provided herein, the use of unmuffled compression brakes perhaps does the same thing that the... I don't know that it may be... make enforcement a lot harder because then we're asking our police department to determine whether there's... whether the brake was muffled or not unmuffled, and that's a little bit hard to do on inspection.
That was part of the consideration, either, you know, to try and make this easier for enforcement is...
Yes.
You know, the officers would know whether or not there was... it was being used or not.
It's a lot easier to say, "Wasn't used or not," and I understand that, and I support that approach, but...
And the partnership with CSP and the quarterly inspections would certainly focus on those modified mufflers that we would like to see not in use. They create an exorbitant amount of noise when they're downshifting.
And it's easy to... it's easy to, when you have an unmodified or when you have a compression brake that is aftermarket, that is not muffled, it's easy to know which ones, what trucks those are on, you know, when they're used. I mean, that's...
The challenge for us becomes the technical aspects of training our personnel up to the same level as Colorado State Patrol to be able to enforce, to prove in a court of law that those muffler systems have been modified.
Well, exactly.
Yeah.
And so, that's why I'm, you know, I'm kind of going back and forth here, but prohibiting the use of compression brakes, I don't think that, you know, I would hope that our officers wouldn't be using this as an opportunity to, you know, stop a passenger truck that has a muffled compression brake on it. But be that as it may, there is a separate issue that I'd like to address, and that is the ability to expand this if needed. Essentially, as I understand it, we're trying this as... we have... we know we have an area of problem, and we want to address that area. And one way to do that is that shall be prohibited within the city boundaries where the city has erected signage identifying this prohibition. Then it can be expanded at any point. And so, I would suggest that as an amendment, that we strike specifically along Highway 50 between First Street and Justice Center Road, and just say that shall be prohibited within the city boundaries where the city has erected signage to identify this prohibition.
Okay. Emily?
I know we've kind of gone around on this, and I am not an expert on engine compression brakes or their mufflers, but I know that... and maybe C.DOT has already said, or maybe state law has already said, that we can't do it this way, but I've seen signs in some communities as I travel that say something like, "Engine compression brake mufflers required." And I just wonder if we could approach it that way and have it apply anywhere in the city. But I would be happy if that's wrong, if someone can tell me, "No, that won't work because..." Okay. But it just seems like that would solve the problem because what we're trying to do is eliminate the very loud noise that some of those trucks make within city limits. So, if it's just a muffler issue, why can't we just sign it that way and say, "Engine compression brake mufflers required within city limits?" I'm happy to hear the answer to that.
And Jerry?
So, I'm no expert also. However, I do know a lot of people that drive trucks, and most of them say there's no reason to be using compression brakes through town. So, the whole thing from First to Justice Center Road, that's a no-brainer. No compression brakes. It doesn't need to be muffled, unmuffled, modified. Just no. And I see that all over the country, going through towns. Coming down eight-mile hill, maybe necessary, it's a safety thing. Coming down different areas, and I know this doesn't help tunnel drive situation, but what I'd like to know is, aside from the engine brake ordinance that we're looking at, can someone give me a refresher on our regular, everything else noise ordinance?
Okay. I got three, like, one, like... Sorry, I got three very diverse questions. So, can I take them in the order that they came in?
Well, I didn't ask three questions.
No, I know, but I...
Oh, okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack and Councilmember Tracy, now your question number three. So, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack, channeling my... your municipal prosecutor, she's going to want that language in there, I think, to be very specific to enforce and prosecute, to say this is the section and it has signage. So, I think she's going to want to... I think she's going to kind of push back on that suggestion a little bit. Councilmember Tracy, what you're asking for is already... my understanding is already part of the model traffic code that the city has adopted that requires those mufflers, so that's already a provision in the model traffic code. So, we would not need to make any additional changes. That muffler requirement is in there.
And we can add signage up on tunnel road to that effect.
Yes.
Designating the state code for that.
Okay. And then, your question... sorry. So, you... and I don't have it in front of me. I didn't get a chance to pull it up. But the vehicle noise provision is in A. That's related specifically to vehicle noise. Your general noise ordinance is pretty broad. I don't know if you remember it off the top of your head, but I don't... but it's pretty broad. It's not very specific, and it's pretty objective, or sorry, subjective.
Subjective.
And difficult. It's a... noise ordinance is notoriously difficult to enforce when they're written like that.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is if the county has a contract with wholesome that says, "These are your hours of operation. We have a tunnel drive issue. We have issues all over town with vehicle noise, et cetera." But this specifically, if our noise ordinance said, "These are the hours that you cannot make a lot of noise," would that not enforce this whole tunnel drive situation by enforcing their contract with wholesome, and then also us enforcing our noise ordinance that's more specific to the timeframes that you can make a lot of noise, whether it's a truck or, you know, a loud car or diesel, you know, whatever.
We do have time restrictions in there.
Would that help this situation?
Before 7:00 a.m.? Yes, sir.
Okay. Just trying to...
I believe at 7:00 a.m. I... that window that the citizen spoke back, feedback she offered at 4:30 in the morning, that's pretty unreasonable, and that would be outside those provisions.
Okay.
Yeah. And our tunnel drive agreement, the crossing agreement with wholesome will match what the county permits as. So, that should address some of that.
Okay. Makes sense. Amy?
Sorry. I don't think it's enough. The mine agreement that the county has, it starts, I think, at 6:30 a.m., is when jack brakes are allowed to be used, and mine operation can begin at 5:00 a.m. So, you're talking about heavy trucks going up and down that road at essentially all hours. I mean, 5:00 a.m. is a very early time. And regardless, like, your quality of life, even if it is 1:00 o'clock in the afternoon, if you're just trying to enjoy the peace and quiet of your own home, like, you should be able to do that without having really unnecessary vehicle noise. And I think, Councilmember Maloney, as you noted, this is an issue that, like, yes, it is absolutely affecting our residents on tunnel drive, but it also affects people across the city, whether you're trying to enjoy a beverage on a patio on Main Street, or whether you're just trying to sleep through the night, which is why I firmly support and fully endorse 1425A, which states, "No person shall operate any vehicle in such a manner on a curve or turn or accelerate or decelerate such vehicle as to create loud and unnecessary noise or cause damage to the roadway." I think that that's a basic quality of life that we should be trying to give the citizens of Canyon City.
I think another issue that's been brought up is that the increase in traffic. My thought as to whether it's right or wrong is they're lining up at 4:30 in the morning because they want to be first in line. And, you know, they want to get there, and they want to get to their jobs or back to their yard where they keep their rock, and it's... I think there needs to be something set up to where they can't even get in line before 6:30 or something to give these people a chance to have a quote-unquote "normal" life as much as you possibly can. So, I think those increased trucks, any of us that have taken 115, we know that early in the morning, late in the afternoon, those trucks are coming and going all the time.
Well, I come from a family, a truck driving family, and compression brakes are necessary, but they don't have to be that loud. And I know that the newer models are quieter. They are necessary, and they're used for many purposes. Wear and tear on your brakes, things of that nature, heat on the brakes, stuff like that. But there's a lot that are... have modified their, what they call dunkie ears that stick out the back of the vehicle, and they will get caught if they get inspected. And that is one of the inspection things that our trucks would go through all the time. And there's a fine for that. And they can pull you over, park it, and you're out of your truck. But... and I know we have in there about emergencies and everything, but a compression brake is extremely needed. But I don't think that... a lot of them need to be that loud, ever. The new trucks, you won't hear that. You'll hear a hissing sound, but not what I hear, and I live in Lincoln Park. I don't know where that goes, but I can tell you... you can't... I don't know if you can outlaw compression brakes. Then you got to... I think you got to define noise. So... Is this another issue we need to talk about some more? Andrea?
Yes, yes. I think we need to look at the reality. We can pass laws till the cows come home, but if we don't have manpower to sit there and watch those guys as they come down and, you know, monitor the sound, what they're doing, if they're running the stop sign, and, you know, I don't think we have men that can do that, officers that can do that all day. I... you know what I'm saying?
No, absolutely. Councilwoman, I appreciate that consideration. We are extremely low, staffing-wise, but I talked with Councilman... or Councilman Commander Sabotino while council was meeting this evening after the ladies conversation or feedback to council. And we're going to look at using some of our vacancy savings to fund some overtime, to go over and take a look at this area and kind of measure the level of our issues. And if we run across violations that require enforcement, then we'll take that necessary action. As long as we can do that outside of the window of normal patrol and not take staffing numbers from the patrols that are responding to calls for service, we can start to look at it a bit.
So, if I go over there some morning at 5:00, and I turn somebody in for making a lot of noise and running that stop sign, will your officer come out and talk to me?
As long as we can positively identify the vehicle and the driver, we'll take care of it.
Okay. All right. And they won't know when it's coming.
We're all having coffee at tunnel drive, aren't we?
So, we have several volunteers already on council, chief, so...
I'll bring some power rings.
There you go. And oftentimes, when they know that you know, or the owners of those vehicles know, I think that might go a long way. These are... sure, they're trying to make a buck.
Sure.
But on the other hand, again, I was born and raised with trucks, and they're necessary, but they don't want it to be that loud.
Sure.
So...
And that will certainly be the focus of those inspections, and we'll try and do them quarterly.
And I'm pretty sure my dad, who owned the company, was contacted because it was too loud, the truck would be fixed.
Sure.
Those are modified, and they shouldn't have been modified.
But we can stick with the First Street through Justice Center Roads where they're just not allowed at this point, right? We can agree on that, or are we not agreeing on that?
Amy?
Can I make a comment?
No. Yes. Make it short. Yes. We're pushing my bedtime.
Well, you're cutting into my drinking time, sir.
Wait a minute. You don't drink and drive at all, ever.
Oh, no.
No.
I said I was driving.
Never thought so.
I'm just drinking. So, if compression brakes are necessary for emergency and safety, this is what I heard, right? Yeah?
Well, it's not only that. Yeah, sure, but you still use it for wear and tear on your vehicle and everything else. That's why they put them on there. They're a flap over your exhaust manifold. And so, yeah, you can use it for that, but it also helps with wear and tear on brakes, and it's a smoother way to slow it down.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be that loud.
Yeah, I agree. Well, who built the road?
What?
Is that the city road that they're coming down from? Because the city road going up the hill also goes to the water treatment and on up to wholesome. Who built the road?
Well, what does that have to do with this? What's your point?
It has a lot, because if the road was constructed properly, there wouldn't be a question or problem. So, maybe looking at getting them to change roads instead of using a residential road for their industrial equipment would be.
Okay. Emily?
Oh, I just have a really quick comment. I think several of us maybe had concerns that the ordinance as currently written may not fully solve the problem. I am okay with going ahead and supporting it as currently written, but it may be that based on additional gathering of information, we still might need to amend this in the future. But I don't want to hold it up totally because we've been talking about this issue for some number of months now.
Thank you.
Are we appoint someone? Would you like to make a motion? Amy? Apparently not.
I was going to make a request and then make a motion, if that's all right.
Depends what the request is.
City Administrator Stevens, when if this passes first reading tonight and is brought back for a second reading, could we get a kind of fulsome list of what the city is working on to improve the quality of life concerns for the residents, quality of life and public safety concerns for the residents on tunnel drive, including, you know, I think we've heard things about adding signage, requiring the engine compression brake mufflers, and, you know, where we are with the wholesome agreement, and if there is a possibility of using the other road and kind of what that would look like. But if at second reading, if it does pass this evening, could we get a more complete list of kind of how we are planning to address those concerns?
Yeah, absolutely. As far as the second road, I don't know that we can do that. That would... there is no direct access from their property to Highway 50. They would have to go through somebody else's property, whether it's the state or a private citizen. And that may be a question for the attorney, but I don't think we can block access to their property.
I mean, I don't know the details, but generally, I'm going to say, "No, you can't do that." But there might be other options. I'm just not as familiar with that area and the accesses that might be possible, so I don't want to weigh in on the specifics.
We can look at that within the next week before, you know, agenda items go on for the next meeting.
And it might be helpful to have the city attorney also taking a look at the wholesome crossing agreement, because if a crossing agreement is necessary for their trucks to cross our roads, it does seem like we would have some say or leverage there.
Well, this is to prevent them from using the other access on tunnel drive, which goes directly by people's houses. And so, it's using the hill instead of the other access.
Understood. Thank you for looking into that over the course of the next week, and it sounds like Tim may have something, so I will not make a motion.
Tim, do you have a hand or something?
No. Huh?
Well, you have to have a little yellow hand, Tim.
Hey, yeah, it is. No, I just wanted to... No, I just wanted to say, you know, one thing, you know, this, this also affects a lot of other businesses, you know, people in our community, so I think we have to be very careful with this jake brake thing. I have no problem with quieting a jake brake down and requiring that, but, you know, as Preston said, this is, you know, we're also, you know, this is a lot of people's livelihood. We have a lot of trucks coming from other places. We start restricting even the timing of this, you know, this could backfire if we start putting too many restrictions up on wholesome. And, but, you know, we also have trucks coming down at Ninth, you have them coming down ass. We have a few hills in here, and, you know, even the city trucks, some of them have jake brakes on them, and I just think we got to be careful, because as Preston said, these are also a safety thing. They also take the pressure off of the braking system of the trucks. That's all.
Okay. You squinting at me. I've been behind the wheel a lot of times. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, are we at the place where half a loaf is better than none?
As long as it doesn't have a compression brake on it. Do we want to make a motion on this and then look at the second reading with the added information that our administrator will bring? Would someone care to go ahead and make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we vote on a bill for ordinance number five series of 2024, an ordinance of the city of Canyon City amending section 10.04.165 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning vehicle noise.
Mr. Mayor, may I also ask that the motion include a $500 fine?
Yes, and this motion should also go forward including a $500 fine.
Okay. Anything else on that?
I'll second.
Second, Kathy seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Clear? Has mud? Okay, well, let's compress our time and ask for a call roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Well, I think we have successfully, since I've been mayor since the first of the year, gone to the longest meeting that we've had. Thank you all for coming, and if you're going to do it again, I'll be on vacation. No, I'm just kidding. All right, we're adjourned.